Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We'll bring tonight's city council meeting to order. Please rise for your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations.
Staff is requesting that council conduct a public hearing for a city code amendment and consider approval of an addition to the City Ordinance, Chapter 74 Utilities, Article 2, sewage treatment, Section 74-46 Variances. At the January 6th, 2020, City Council work meeting, council gave staff direction to move forward with an amendment to City Code, Chapter 74 Utilities, to allow for septic holding tank variance proceedings to occur at City Council meetings. Variances for holding tanks are not a part of City Code Appendix A and do not fall under the required review of the Planning Commission. Removing the requirement of Planning Commission review will expedite the issuance of these variances. State statute requires a public hearing on the adoption of this ordinance amendment. This amendment is to add Section 74-46B1 to Chapter 74, Article 2, as follows. Section 74-46 Variances, variances for a setback to a property line must be approved by the City Council. And B, variances for holding tanks are required by the City Council, except for the replacement of an existing holding tank. Septic holding tanks are exempt from the variance procedures listed in Appendix A, Section 4-10, Variance D1. All public hearings and proceedings for septic holding tank variances will be held by the City Council. Staff recommends that City Council hold a public hearing on the ordinance amendment, and at the conclusion of the hearing, consider approval of Section 74-46B1 as an addition to the East Bethel City Code, Chapter 74, Article 2.
With that, we'll open the public hearing for the City Code amendment related to utilities and sewage treatment variances. Is anyone here tonight wishing to speak to council on this matter? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Also, at this time, staff recommends that council approve the ordinance change and approve that as ordinance 2020-02, Variances for Utilities Holding Tanks.
Well, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 20-02 for the change in the City Code, Chapter 74 Utilities.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
I think this is a good idea. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Do we need a motion to pass the summary as well?
The summaries include as part of the ordinance.
Part of the ordinance, okay. All right. That concludes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Erin. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any discussion? I'd like to pull item D.
I'd like to pull item A, B, C. I have something to ask about D2 and E.
I'm sorry, Suzanne, can you go one by one?
All of them, except for F.
Okay. So remaining is item F on a consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item A.
Item A, I just have a question on the dues for the TH65 Quarter Coalition. I'm kind of confused at why we would have dues for that.
That, that's a coalition that was formed in 2005, and it involves the counties and cities on Highway 65 in Anoka, Isani, and Kanabik Counties. This group meets once every two months and lobbies and provides input to MINDOT for highway safety improvements, highway projects along the corridor. I think they've been very instrumental in getting several things done in all three counties. We've been a member of that, Anoka County's a member, Isani County, Kanabik County, Ham Lake, Oak Grove, East Bethel, Cambridge, and many of the townships along this route.
That makes sense, and I can't argue with that. I'm just kind of curious, where does the money go? You get all these mayors and city council people together to meet. Where does the money go?
The money goes, those dues are to pay for projects and expenses of running the coalition. All the members of that are not paid anything at all, so that's paid for the website, for certain projects, for publications, and notices, and anything it does to put on meetings to promote highway projects and safety projects on Highway 65.
Okay, one more question. Do they have, like, a budget or something that somebody could look up?
They do have a budget, and that budget will be adopted at their next meeting, which is the fourth Thursday in February, I believe, so I can get you a copy of that.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item A of the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item B.
Item B, I have two things. First, on the whole consent, the consent agenda on the, that we were in our packet, it's listed as a work meeting, so that's kind of a mistake. So I just thought we'd check that out, because I know in two years from now, if I go back to look at this, and I'd say, "Work meeting, wait." I would be confused, so.
Suzanne, where are you looking at?
In the packet, the top, the top that says it's a work meeting, where all the items listed on the consent agenda.
The draft.
Because that's not what I'm seeing here.
It says City Council Work Meeting up here.
What page is that?
That's not the right page, though.
February 10th, 2020.
This is January 27th.
What, I think what Suzanne's referring to is on our consent agenda heading.
Up here on the very heading.
It's entitled Work Meeting.
It says Work Meeting instead of.
Instead of Regular Meeting.
City Council.
Oh, so not the actual minutes? Just the write-up?
Right, yeah. That's the first thing. And then, the minutes. I just wanted to ask about if there's an update on the senior center trash that we talked about last time.
On the, would you, would you remind me of what we discussed on that?
People were renting the senior center, and they can't throw anything away. They have to haul the trash away in their cars, and you were gonna see if we could do something about it?
I haven't had that discussion with them yet. I talked to one of their members, and they've been kind of slow this month, so I've asked if they've responded to me, so as soon as they do, we'll work something out on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll have, make a motion to approve item B on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none, to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item C.
All right, on the Safesure contract renewal, I am wondering two things, why their price increases? And once a person gets trained, I don't understand why they're not qualified just to come back and execute the policies that we put in place. Instead of paying thirty, over $3,000, why do we need to be a member? And how often are, do we use their consulting fees?
Let me answer your second part first. This is a requirement of Minnesota and U.S. Department of Labor, OSHA.
To be a member?
We're required to be trained annually on these things.
Right.
And one time doesn't do it, it has to be done every year. We use, they put on training programs four to six times a year. We train cooperatively and together with Ham Lake, now then Bethel and Oak Grove, so we get some advantage in pricing by doing this as a program together. All this is required, part of the services we get to, we get a simulated OSHA inspection, which makes us prepared for anything that may come up should we, OSHA decide to come and inspect any of our facilities. And again, it's a federal and a state requirement that this training be done on an annual basis.
I understand the training, that's important, but being a member.
Well, it's, it's not a member, we're contracting for their services to provide the training for us on an annual basis. So every one of these cities contracts with Safesure to provide the training. It's not like it's a member and we're joining something, we're contracting with them to provide the training service that OSHA requires.
Oh, so you can't just train and then not be a member, but pay for it just training itself?
Well, again, well, that's why, that's all we're paying for is the training. And they do offer certain other services that we can utilize. Like I said, the one is the OSHA type inspection.
Okay.
And some other consulting things, but this is basically paying for their training. As far as their price increases go, actually what you see here, the difference in that the first figure, the $3,200 is a budgeted amount. Actually, last year, we paid them $3,491.97. This year, it's $3,5161.81, or roughly about $70 increase, which is only a 2% increase.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve item C on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none, to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item D, the consent agenda, is the planning commission appointments. The planning commission interviewed and recommended that Jim Smith be appointed to the planning commission. And since that time, we've had another vacancy on planning. And Mr. Darrell Lawrence was the other candidate that interviewed. And so staff is recommending both these gentlemen be appointed to the planning commission. Question I have is, Jim Smith is also a member of the Roads Commission.
Correct.
And although it's not written into the write-up, is Mr. Smith resigning from roads, then, to be on planning?
Yes, I had that discussion with Jim, and he said as soon as his appointment with the on the planning commission is approved, he will resign from the Roads Commission.
Okay, okay. And with that, then, I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Darrell Lawrence to the term that expires on January 31st, '22. And appoint Mr. Smith to the three-year term that expires on January 31st, 2023, with the caveat that that appointment become official upon resignation from the Roads Commission.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
I would like to say something. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Jim Smith for his appointment. My second thing is, I think, in my mind, it should be advertised, that Mr. Cornet.
Portelli.
Cornetelli's position should be advertised, because I've known someone who was going to apply, but they wanted to make sure one of the two that were applying would have a better chance of getting it. So I'm thinking it should be opened and advertised. I think if that's our policy, we should do it that way, not just automatically appoint somebody because they did an interview, they may not have to interview again, but it should be advertised, in my mind.
Check, how long, how long after the interviews at planning did Lou resign?
Probably about a week, or just less than a week.
And we had it open for two months.
Two and a half months.
Two and a half months, so. It was open for two and a half months, so.
Yeah, and this person had the opportunity to apply in the last one, so he apparently never did, so. Why should we leave it open for another two, two months and?
Yeah, when we have.
Yeah, we've got two qualified people now, so I mean, what's a?
Yeah, good candidates, so.
So our policy says that when a position comes open, we advertise it, right? And how long does it have to be advertised for?
It doesn't say. Sometimes we advertise until the position's filled, sometimes we get enough applicants that we can do it within four to six weeks. Lately, our problem on these commissions has been getting applicants. We're not only the Roads and Parks, but now the, the Planning Commission also. Previous years, we, if we had something open on the Planning Commission for two months, we'd had six applicants.
That's all I have for that one.
What, what's it been for Roads, too? It's been six months, we haven't anybody applying for that opening in six months when, for Tom, for Tom's spot?
That's, yeah, that, that one's been.
That's still open, isn't it?
Yeah, that's been for eight months.
Eight months, so I mean, you know.
We'll have two now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two open positions.
But I mean, Tom's has been open for a while, we haven't anybody applied for, for his one.
Right, and we have been advertising for it.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Any other discussion?
I forget your name.
Darrell.
Darrell.
Darrell? It's, the, the last EDA opening, there were two of you that were interested, I think. And thanks for keeping us in mind and keep your interest up for. You had a nice resume accompanied your application.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Welcome to the planning commission, both of you. And then Suzanne, item E.
Item E is for the seasonal employee position advertisement. I just want to clarify something. Did we just hire one last year, or did we have two last year?
We had two.
We had two. I, I remember one, but for some reason, I wanted to clarify that. All right, that's all I have. I will make a motion to approve item E on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. On to new business.
All right, we've got agenda item six. Staff is requesting the consideration of approval and denial of a variance request for setback reductions at 3742 Edmar Lane. Robert Taska is applying for a variance for a reduction in setback for the construction of an addition to the existing residence and for the relocation of existing non-conforming deck. A building permit was already issued for the addition because the survey initially submitted did not accurately reflect the footprint of the new addition, nor the encroachment on the setbacks. A subwork order has been issued until such a time that the setback variance issues are resolved by City Council. This property is within the Coon Lake Beach Shoreland Overlay District and is .29 acres in size. The maximum allowable impervious surface on properties within the Shoreland Overlay District is 25%. The proposed addition will bring the impervious surface of the lot to 22.7%. The property owner is proposing an addition to the existing home. A portion of the addition will be constructed in the same location as the existing deck, as shown on the attached survey. Therefore, the encroachment upon the 75-foot ordinary high water, herein referred to as OHW setback requirement, is 1.75 feet. Therefore, the addition will be setback 73.25 feet from the ordinary high water. The request for the setback reduction for an existing non-conforming deck does not meet the three-factor test required for granting variances, as the need to relocate the deck is due to the proposed addition. Without the variance, the addition of the majority of the existing deck would still be able to remain as it presently exists. For the three-factor test, the first factor is reasonableness. The applicant's response is that it's reasonable to maximize the useful living space of an already small lake home within the given lot. Keeping the same-sized deck and moving it two feet west to accommodate the addition will not extend it past the existing chimney and will afford us enough space for family gatherings. Since the time of application that was amended, the newly proposed deck is actually a half a foot smaller towards the west property line, so instead of 16.5 feet, the deck would, proposed deck is only 16 feet. The staff note is that the chimney is allowed by ordinance up to a two-foot encroachment per Appendix A, Section 11-1, Measurements and Encroachments, in which it states under Subpoint A, "Architectural appendages extending two feet or less into the required front side or rear yard setbacks shall not be considered encroachments." Architectural appendages may include features such as eaves, bough or bay, or bow or bay windows, fireplaces, cantilevers, and similar items. The deck presently conforms to the zoning ordinance of the west property set, line setback, but not the ordinary high water setback. Granting a variance to move the deck, the 2.3 feet to the west, as detailed in the survey, would be increasing the nonconformity. The denial of a variance in the case of relocating the deck does not deny the landowner reasonable use of the property, as expansion of the house without the relocation of the deck would only require a portion of the deck to be removed, not the entire deck. The request of a variance from the ordinary high water setback for the addition of the home is reasonable, as the addition will be located in the space presently occupied by the deck, which does not increase the nonconformity of the property. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The applicant's response is, because of the location of the house, septic and garage, it's the only space available to build. Staff note, the location of the deck does not meet the requirements of this test, as the relocation is due to the proposed addition by the property owner. Wanting to move the deck to maintain its current size is not unique to this property, as the majority of homes in this neighborhood have similar challenges with the setback requirements, as well as impervious surface requirements due to the average size of the lots. The request of a variance from the ordinary high setback for the addition of the home is unique to the property, as the septic drain field is located on the opposite side of the house. With a narrow lot and 10-foot side yard setback, the property owner would be unable to create an adequate addition through expansion to the east, as there's only 2.1 feet from the setback requirement on that side of the property, and the existing house is nonconforming on the west side, as it is 9.6 feet from the property line, as shown in the survey. The third factor is that the variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The applicant's response is, the small addition will enhance the look of the lake home and better fit in with neighboring homes. Staff note, there are numerous properties in this neighborhood that are legally nonconforming. However, there is no precedent to grant the expansion of a nonconforming use through the allowance of a variance for the relocation of the deck. Per Section 11-1, it lists what structures are allowed to encroach on setbacks across the city. If it was the intent for the, for decks to encroach, they would be included in that section. As the ordinance reads, "It is the intention of the code to disallow these nonconformities, so moving forward, more properties will comply with current setback requirements." The request of a variance from the ordinary high water setback for the addition to the home does not alter the characteristics of the neighborhood, as many of the existing homes along the lake on Edmar Lane are nonconforming, including the residents neighboring the property to the east located at 3754 Edmar Lane, in which the house is setback approximately 72 feet from the ordinary high water. A reduction in the setback from the ordinary high would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Additionally, the precedence has been set, as City Council has approved variances as recently as 2016, to reduce a residential setback from the ordinary high. On January 28th, 2020, the planning commission held a public hearing. There were no public comments. The commission recommends the approval to the reduced setback by 1.75 feet from the ordinary high water for the residential structure, from 75 feet to 73.25 feet for the addition, and approval to reduce the westerly side yard setback by 1.8 feet from the required setback of 10 feet to 8.2 for the placement of the deck. City Council has requested to approve the variances to reduce the setback from the ordinary high water from 75 to 73.25 feet to reduce the side yard setback, oh, and to reduce the side yard setback. However, staff has included the resolution of denial for the side yard setback in the event that City Council agrees with the denial findings of fact in the matter of the side yard setback variance request.
Move for approval of the variances to reduce the setback from the, excuse me, from the ordinary high water from 75 feet to 73.25.
Before we proceed, you have, there's a number of draft resolutions that are in our packet for this.
Staff prepared the approval resolution for the addition of the home, and we also drafted up the approval and denial resolutions for the deck, depending on how council decides to vote tonight.
So, Tom, which, is there a specific resolution you're referring to?
Okay. 2020-08 is approving variance request. Move for approval of resolution number 2020-08, approving a variance request for a setback reduction of 1.75 feet for the construction of an addition to the existing residence on the property located at 3742 Lamar Lane. Proper identification, 35-33-23-21-0006. Block five, block one, Edwards Beach, Coon Lake, Anoka County.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Motion made in second. So this, so we understand it, we all understand, this resolution also states that the property must reduce the area of the existing deck, as opposed to relocating it? Is that correct?
That can be amended.
Okay. So then, for clarification, we also have Resolution 2020-09 in two different forms. And that's specific to?
The deck.
The deck. So what I'm confused about is if 2020-08 also includes, isn't it also covering the other resolution?
I apologize. At the time of the planning commission, we had the resolution drafted, and I, it was an oversight on my part that I did not remove the portion of the deck from that resolution. So that, that can be stricken. I was editing seven or eight different documents to make sure that we had everything ready, so that was with the intention of only approving the addition.
So what you're stating, what you're saying, on the second page of the resolution, which is page 37 in our packet, in the last paragraph, item two, states the property must reduce the area of the existing deck, as opposed to relocating the deck, as to not expand a nonconformity. You're saying that should be stricken from the resolution?
That is correct.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend, the motion to remove the second clause on the last, therefore, of the second page of the resolution, where it states that the owner must reduce the area of the existing deck.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? To motion to amend, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to amend passes. Now we're back to original motion discussion. So we're just acting on the encroachment of the house, and the deck will be, okay. To the motion, original motion as amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Now we have a second resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-09, a variance request for a setback reduction of 1.8 feet for the relocation of, of an existing nonconforming deck on the property located at 3742 Edmar Lane, pin number 353323210006.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion. Clarification. You're, you're approving the resolution, was it the version that was approving the variance or denying the variance? Because we have two resolutions in our packet. Because we have two resolutions in our packet.
Correct.
So you're-
This is the second one, the deck?
Right. But there's two versions of this resolution. One for approval of the variance, one for denial of the variance. I just want to make it clear, it sound like you're, you're approving the variance.
I'm gonna approve, yeah, because, okay. I see what you're talking about.
So for clarification, you're, you're approving the variance?
I am approving it.
Okay.
I'm doing the first one.
Okay, and then the second? I forgot it was second, that motion.
Tom.
Tom, you're, you're, okay. Now we're understood, okay. Discussion.
Mayor and council members, on that, that resolution, I believe there might be a language amendment needed in the therefore clause as well of that, page thirty-nine, after now therefore indicating approval of it, second word in on second line.
Yeah, I see, I see that.
Says denies instead of approves. I will make a motion to amend the previous motion on the now, on the now therefore be it resolved to change denies to approve in the last paragraph.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion to the motion to amend. Hearing none, to the motion to amend, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, back to the original motion as amended.
I have a question for legal representation. I mean, it seems to me that staff has expressed concern that this does not meet the reasons, you know, for, for creating the setbacks. Are, are we legally on, on firm ground by approving this, this piece?
Mayor and, and council members, regarding that question, the approval of a variance is a legislative act by a city council. Therefore, if you determine that this variance meets the conditions in, in your city code and, and state statute for a variance, and the findings included in this resolution do support that, if you approve the resolution with these findings, it would be a valid variance. It's a legislative act by, by you, the council, the Planning Commission has, has recommended approval. You've, you have proposed findings in front of you. If you approve the variance, it's a valid variance.
Very good, thank you. No more questions.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes.
Congratulations on your addition.
Glad you understood all that, too.
Thank you very much.
Onto zoning text amendments.
All right, so the requested action is consideration of approval of the city code amendment. At the January sixth, 2020 city council work meeting, staff requested guidance from city council on several ordinance changes to be made. The following items were discussed, and staff was given direction to present proposed tax amendments under Appendix A-dash zoning for council consideration. Section ten dash five driveway access and standards is adding, adding language that is just reiterating what is already present in our fire code. The text reads, "All driveways over one-hundred-and-fifty feet must conform with the fire apparatus, access road standards as adopted in City Code, Section thirty dash thirty-nine, and set forth in the Minnesota Uniform Fire Code as amended from time to time." And then, Section fourteen detached accessory structures is amending to, conform to the Minnesota Building Code, where it does not require permits for structures under two-hundred square feet, as opposed to one-hundred-and-twenty square feet. It also drastically expands the maximum square footage per acre size, instead of going by, in approximately two-acre increments, it breaks it down by quarter acre. And then, it also is adding updates to the Minnesota Residential Building Code, so that they are not missed on building permit applications, and to allow contractors to be aware of some of these updates that they may not otherwise be aware of, such as the fourteen-foot sidewall heights requiring additional bracing and engineering possibly.
Can I ask a question here?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't understand why you set up the table that way, as opposed to how we discussed at that work meeting. But why is Viking Preserve at the bottom of this table, I don't follow?
In the developer's agreement for Viking Preserve, it was established that within that subdivision, they're not allowed to have any detached accessory structures over the two-hundred-square-foot shed. So it's already something that was agreed to for that specific subdivision, and so instead of somebody within that subdivision coming in and saying, "I would like to add my five-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot garage in my backyard," and then staff having to tell them, "Well, that's actually prohibited based on how this subdivision was approved," then it spells it out to allow them to see that that is how that subdivision was intended.
So, with that, every, every time we have a developer's agreement, has something particular, we're gonna amend our ordinance?
Not necessarily. Most, none of the other subdivisions within the city have had that as a specific agreement.
Well, I mean, going forward, if, you know, we have five or six more, you know, housing developments that have this. And the other practical question to me is, you know, I think maybe right now the people moving into Viking Preserve know what Viking Preserve is. Twenty years from now, no one's gonna know what Viking Preserve is. No one knows what any of their developments are called, you know, it comes out as time goes on. So I don't know, I don't know what the practicality of that is, but I was just curious why it just showed up, that we didn't discuss at that work meeting, so.
This had, with this being a building department kind of collaborative item, it was recommended that this be put in there, and with the zoning ordinance being a living document, it was suggested this way because as the document grows and evolves with how East Bethel would like to be, it was assumed that it would be amended in the future. Our detached accessory structure ordinance is one of the most amended documents to suit the needs of the community.
I agree with that, so. All right. You can continue.
So then, these are just highlighting that engineer drawings are required, and these all conform with the Minnesota Uniform Building Code. And then we move on to Section twenty-two dash three C, prohibited parking. This is the text that staff came up with. It is amending parking of buses, motor trucks, semi-trail, tractors, and/or semi-trailers on individual properties is prohibited except for active loading or unloading activities independent of permanent home occupations or activities utilized to render a contact, contracted or ordered service. On a parcel of land within a platted subdivision, any parcel of land less than three acres or any properties with a non-agricultural tax classification. This text was taken from the horses ordinance for wording, because of the intent was to limit the allowance of semis on the smaller lots, because it tends to only be within subdivisions where we are getting the regular complaints. Staff is requesting that if council does not, is not comfortable with this wording, that we come back to it at a different time, and as opposed to tabling the entire ordinance amendment, that we strike this from the amendment.
I take one question. It almost seems like that last sentence is a double negative in it. So, the, one of the exceptions is any property without a non-egg tax classification. Aren't we really saying any property with an egg tax classification is exempt? Isn't that what we're trying to say?
So then, without should be changed to with, yes, I see what you're meaning now.
Well-
The intention is to-
With a egg, not, you gotta strike the non, too.
But we don't, we want to prohibit it on non-agricultural tax classifications. We would, we want the semis to be able to be utilized on an agricultural-
As an exception, the exception is egg property, right?
Yes.
So we should say any egg property is, is one of the exceptions?
The non should be stricken.
Well, the non and, and the without.
But it says-
These are, these are the ones that are exempt. So if, if they're with, if they have an egg tax classification, they should be exempt from this.
Some, some of the farms don't have the egg-
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, I want to get this wording right first.
It's the prohibit prohibitions except for, I-
With all and none.
It's, the way it reads it is a kind of a complicated sentence. The sentence may need to be reworded a little bit, too. But it says is prohibited on any properties without, and you strike the non-
No, it's, no, go, yeah, we got to start, it's prohibited except.
Yeah.
And then everything after that is prohibited.
Those are all exceptions, though.
Okay.
So it should be amended to strike out and non?
I think that's, I think it's too, it's too long or something. Wouldn't it be easier just to reform at that paragraph and just put the exceptions as either numbered or as bullets?
Yes.
So make it clear, because now I'm going back in that second part, it doesn't sound quite right either.
Yeah, so we can-
Okay.
And then the fence regulations. Is amending to require a fence permit for all fences within the R-one and R-two districts. Requiring a permit in general for pool fences, this would be covered under our current pool application. And then it does exempt the fence types for, for garden fences, invisible dog fences, and approved types of temporary fences, which in this case would be snow fences, silt fences, as was discussed in the work meeting. On January twenty-eighth of 2020, the Planning Commission held a public hearing. There were no public comments, and the Planning Commission recommended approval five to zero of the proposed tax changes. City Council has requested to approve the proposed changes to the zoning code by adopting the attached resolution and summary publication.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve these changes with the exception of, of the paragraph regarding the parking. I'd like to have this pulled out of the consideration, have that reworded by staff and brought back to council.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
All right, well, first I want to bring up the driveway access and standards, because when we were at the work meeting, I specifically asked and was told this is, these restrictions that they were implementing was for new construction, and what I read in here is it's for all properties. So I'm not going to vote for current residents to have to go and modify their driveways for thousands of dollars, because we're changing an ordinance on them.
Those wouldn't be affected. There's no sunset clause as to when they would be required to adopt that or change that. So with the exception of them having to completely rebuild the new home, they would technically be a legal nonconforming use for the driveway, so they would be allowed to remain the way that they are.
But that's not what this says.
Which, which subpoint?
Is this, is this portion of, of the ordinance related to new development?
Yes, this is for our new development standards in Section ten. I believe that the section of the driveway ordinance that you're reading is subpoint four, that's been in place since 2010. This is only moving forward, there's no sunset date, as, like, this would only be construction moving forward.
So it's, Suzanne, it's part of the portion of ordinance related to new development, but if we were to insert, I mean, that's, that's new section starts all driveways over one-hundred-and-fifty feet. If we were to insert new, say all new driveways? Does that satisfy?
In this red part?
Yeah.
In the red part, yes.
Say all new, all new driveways.
This does not, this says all driveways, it doesn't say new driveways, it doesn't say, which I could see, I could see right now, we, we have this understanding, but we get a new council, we get new people in the office, and they're like, nope, it says all driveways right here. You must, resident, you must abide by this ordinance. And I've seen us do that to current residents now, because fifteen years ago, somebody in the council said, "Yeah, you can do this," and now we're saying, "Nope, you can't do it, it's against our ordinance." So, yes.
Are these driveways for new driveways, or is it for new construction homes and buildings?
The fire code doesn't actually specify. That's why we're adopting this. This has already been adopted within the entirety of the city ordinance, what, in, from nineteen-seventy-three, when we adopted the uniform, or the, the fire code.
The only time this would come into consideration would be if somebody applies for a building permit for a home, the driveway portion would be looked at, so that is involved in new construction.
So, we can add new in there, but this, this ordinance is only to new construction. It's not to existing homes.
I understand.
So that wouldn't apply, but, but if we add new in there, it makes it a little more clear, so.
All right, thank you, we'll add new in that one.
Can we get a motion to amend then?
I'll make a mo-
May we speak for a little bit more? From what you said, can we put something in there as far as all driveways for new? Part of the, part of the building permit for new housing?
This is out of that part of the ordinance.
It is.
It's out of new housing.
Okay, pardon me.
So, do I make a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend the driveway and accessory standards to add the word new into that sentence.
Between all driveways.
Between all and driveways.
Is there a second to the motion to amend?
I'll second.
Tim seconds, any discussion? To the motion to amend, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to amend passes, back to the original motion. Continue discussion.
I'm really not in favor of the fence regulation changes. I don't like the fact that we're going to require a fence permit. I think it's, to me, I, I don't think it's necessary. We already are doing it for anything over six feet. I mean, you know, for any fence that we build, we, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna have to come to the city, get a permit, and then have somebody come out and check it, and I personally am not in favor of that, those particular changes.
I agree with you, Randy.
I agree, too, and, and adding the swimming pool ordinance, I'm not in favor of that either.
Presently, we do already require a certificate of compliance, which is after the fact. So instead of staff being able to check if there's a drainage and utility easement already existing on the property, to tell them that, you know, you should avoid this area, because otherwise that puts liability on your- to tell them that, you know, you should avoid this area because otherwise that puts liability on your property, then this permit, which could be established as a lower permit, um, would be before that. So it would avoid the fact that, you know, if they put a nice fence into the drainage and utility easement and say Public Works needs to go through there, that fence would get torn out. So they'd be paying $50 after the fact to get a signature from the city as opposed to confirming beforehand that the fence is where it's supposed to be. So, it, it's already a requirement, it's just, uh, whether or not they're getting confirmation that the fence goes where it needs to.
Well, I guess, you know, for me, um, I don't mind, uh, getting a permit for a pool fence. For me, uh, for the other fencing, um. Maybe we just need to, to do, do a better job of explaining to our residents, you know, what the requirements are, rather than saying, get a permit.
The only thing about that, Randy, is the explanation to our residents comes after the fact because if you have a fence less than six feet, you don't have to get a permit for it. You have to get a confirmation compliance, but that's only done after the fact and it's essentially based on the honor system and nobody comes in to get it and we don't know about it, so it's not inspected.
Well, and then, and then if there's a problem, that homeowner has to change it.
That's correct.
Whereas if he had a permit ahead of time, they would've known. I mean, there's that one, I forget which place it was on the south side, we just happened to notice that they're building a six foot fence in their front yard. That's, we caught him when he put their first post in the ground, otherwise they would've cut half their fence down along 100 feet.
What will this do, um, for the city cost as far as, um, inspections? And cost being the labor required to?
In, in the last week, since this has been proposed with this being in the packet, we've already had a fence contracting company reach out about a new fence that they were looking to install in Viking Preserve. So as opposed to just putting it in, and as you know, there's a large delineated area for that pond there, they came in and they had us show them the survey where they could place the fence. And now they are aware of where that is instead of putting it all the way to the waterline. And they would've before not known where that was. And now, and we're not gonna be risking taking their brand new fence out of a brand new home if there were a, an issue. But additionally, staff would be recommending that the fence permit for under six feet or up to six feet be $15. The entire interaction took me 15 minutes for the, getting the survey. The additional time spent would be on, an onsite inspection. That would be purely only me or the planning department handling those inspections. So it's not adding any additional staff time anywhere else.
Under the current fee schedule, the permit fee for a fence over six feet is $50 and also the compliance confirmation is $50 also. So, un, under this, if we lower that fee for inspection, which is gonna really probably benefit homeowners in certain situations in the long run, their permit fees would be $15 for a fence under six feet.
How many?
$15.
One five.
So, we're just, we're basically replacing the existing permit system with a, a pre-construction permit, which will benefit the, the homeowner. Will prevent issues of having the city confront the homeowner, of changing something they didn't get permitted for. And then the permit fee is gonna be less.
In the time since the certificate of compliance was established in the ordinance, I believe it was 2007, we've had one resident come in and apply for and obtain a certificate of compliance.
Even though everyone's required?
Even though every single R1 and R2 property is required to have it.
So I don't see how this is not improving what we have.
It's continuing to restrict our residents as far as I could see and, um.
But restrict them from putting a fence in the wrong spot.
And all that would take us.
Or on the wrong property, you know?
All that it takes is for us to educate, we can put, every spring, we can put something on the website, we can put it in the newsletter. If you're gonna build a fence, contact City Hall to find out where your property is. $15, it's not much, but it's a lot to some people.
But it, it's, the contacting City Hall is already listed on the website with, along with the certificate of compliance, so.
What, what does this do as far as surveys?
Um, in this case, we would be going out there, like, I have general knowledge of where the pins may be because of how often I work with GIS. So going out there and with a survey on file to help them locate where, if they need help locating that or just confirming the location of the fence before it's installed.
The survey on file that came with my building permit is wrong.
And we are finding that is the case in certain circumstances. In that case, in a lot of the, those areas though are the rural residential. These, this permit here is really intended mainly for the urban lots that are being newly developed, the smaller quarter acre lots. Uh, if you were to put a fence on your property line and you're telling me that the survey is wrong, the ratio for your property is pro, very much different from, you know, say the lot sizes in Viking Preserve or Coon Lake Beach, where that, you know, six inches we found in the last six months causes quite a bit of a disturbance to day to day life.
Well, if mine's different, do the same rules apply to me as Coon Lake Beach?
I, I really think what the main intent of this is, is to inform residents. I wanna put a fence on my side yard, well, there's a 10-foot drainage and utility easement there. So if they want a fence, they're gonna have to set it back out of that. It's to inform them of where these easements are and if there are any other particular situations that might result in them having to alter the location of that fence in the future. Uh, as far as pins and things, I think that's a, a, a good concept, but I don't think, and, excuse me here, I don't think that's something we wanna get into. It's gonna be up to those people to find their own pins.
Yep. I agree.
So I accept your explanation. I have another concern here though, under item E, uh, where you're talking about the exceptions. You're talking about approved types of temporary fences. That seems rather ambiguous to me, I mean, it, you know, um. Is it just gonna be what city decides is approved? I mean, since there's no description about, you know, what type of temporary fence is gonna be approved? So if a resident were to read this and they read that part of it and they said, well, I'm just gonna put up a fence and it's considered temporary, how do they know whether it's what's approved or what's not approved?
This could be amended to add as detailed in the engineering manual because both our snow fences and our silt fences for construction are detailed in there with plates. Uh, those are the two tem, temporary fences that ordinance already approves.
Are, are the temporary fences defined within the ordinance?
I believe so.
Or the approved, actually, the approved types of temporary fences? Cause there's temporary fences, I assume they're not approved, if there's somewhere approved.
Well, I mean, I, that's.
I, I agree, it's ambiguous, I mean, I understand the intent, but I think we do need to clarify that a little bit.
There's not presently a definition for temporary fence. The.
For, for, uh, the snow fences that folks might be putting up related to the snowmobile issues we talked in the past, do they need to come in and get a, a, any kind of permit from us or approval from us to do that?
The only thing they have to do is comply with the engineering standards.
Okay, so. So perhaps if that references the engineering standards more closely is?
So then we're gonna be revisiting this again, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I think probably with your questions that we should come back to make sure that these clarifications are presented in written form to clarify these issues we discussed and we can bring it back in the next meeting. For this one.
I mean, and, and another consideration, um, to Suzanne's concern about, you know, the cost for the permit. So for less than a six foot fence, you're proposing a $15 permit?
That's correct.
I'd propose not to have a fee for that permit, for the cost of $15, it's more administrative just to deal with it, so. And then that takes away the, the financial hurdle there.
I move to.
I think that also would, would remove maybe some of my objection as well.
Okay.
Again, um, $15, again, I understand it's, it's a meal out, but on the other hand, it's, it's, I didn't really consider it to be onerous. I just didn't really like the fact that we were going through this whole process.
Move to table pending, uh, further addition to review.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion made, second at the table. Any discussion?
I just, I wanna ask about the pool fences requiring a permit. Why is this being added in here?
Because it's part of the Minnesota Uniform Building Code. All built, all pools over, I believe it's 5,000 gallons require a fence. And so in order to make it easier for the residents, we were, wanted to spell it out in this ordinance. Uh, the building inspectors both requested it.
Is this above ground or just, I mean?
Both.
Both, yes. I, I can't see above-ground pools needing a fence.
But that's, that's state.
It's part of state statute.
It's part of state statute.
It's actually also part of the International Building Code, so it's, it's on a federal level that all pools over 5,000 gallons require it.
So whether we put it in there or not, they would still have to comply with putting the fence around, around the pool anyway, so.
My, my understanding, a lot of the purpose for the fence is keep chil, small children from going in and drowning.
That's why they have it, and, and animals as well.
Above, above-ground pools generally have decks around them and that's what this is for. If it were just that and there were no access, if it was just four feet above ground, it may not be, it may be different. But above-ground pools, a lot of them have decks, so that's why the, the fencing requirement's there.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to table? Staff has enough direction.
Are, are we tabling the entire ordinance amendment?
The entire, yep, the entire.
Thank you.
So. Uh, any further discussion? Here none to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion passes, uh, this item's tabled. On to department reports.
Item 7G1.
Thanks, Aaron.
Consider approval of the City of East Bethel's participation in the 245th Avenue paving project. 245th Avenue originally was a boundary street between East Bethel and Athens Township. Due to gradual shifts of this unpaved road, the existing travel portion of the street is almost entirely in Athens Township. Prairie Pines is a proposed 15-lot subdivision that was prevented through the City Council on March 25th, 2019 for preliminary plat approval. The primary entrance to the subdivision at this time would have been through the City of Bethel by way of 243rd Avenue. However, due to lack of an agreement between the City of Bethel and the developer, the only access to the project at this time is 245th Avenue. At the February 3rd, 2020 work meeting, City Council directed staff, after discussion, to inform Athens Township that the City of East Bethel City Council would consider participating in this project subject to the following conditions. The city's portion of the construction cost of the project does not exceed $44,000 or 21.4% of the actual project cost, whichever amount is less. The travel slash paved portion of the road is to remain in Athens Township with the south edge of the pavement of 245th Avenue to run concurrent with the Anoka-Izzy County line. The right-of-way clearance is to be limited to 16 and a half feet from the south edge of the pavement into East Bethel's easement unless additional clearance is required for utility poles or other special considerations. The City of East Bethel will be responsible for snow plowing 245th Avenue east of Sixth Street to the cul-de-sac termination of this segment of 245th and the proposed internal street within the Prairie Pine subdivision. With the exception of snow removal as described above, Athens Township will continue the maintenance arrangement that is currently in place for 245th Avenue. The City of East Bethel would coordinate the Conexus utility relocation within the city easement and this estimated cost for this is $3,000 to $5,000 for the city engineer services. The City of East Bethel will extend the current non-annexation agreement with Athens Township for an additional 10 years. The City of East Bethel accepts the engineering specifications of Athens Township for the 245th Avenue project with the paved portion of the street meeting nine ton requirements. And the City of East Bethel is in agreement to the transition of the road width from the end of the pavement just east of the entrance street to Prairie Pines to taper to the width of the entrance at the cul-de-sac at the end of the street and retain this section as an unpaved road with service improvements as provided by the project contractor. City staff requests City Council consider approval of participating in the 245th Avenue project subject to the conditions contained in the staff report of this presentation dated February 10th, 2020 and notify Athens Township of our level of financial commitment, our project obligations, and basic specifications for the street and assignment of maintenance responsibilities.
Move for adoption of the recommended approval of participating in the 245th Avenue paving project subject to the conditions contained in the staff report of February 10th, 2020 and notify Athens Township of our level of financial commitment, our project obligations, basic specifications for the street, and assignment of maintenance responsibilities.
Is there a second to motion?
I'll second.
Motion made, second, discussion.
I guess my first question, Jack, is, is, um. Have we contacted, um. Conexus for the connections to change the electrical on this piece yet?
We have sent a request in for their comment, we have not received that yet. Again, with the limits of East Bethel's financial participation on this, if we approve this tonight, should Conexus say, no, we're not going to relocate these at ours expense? Our expense is capped at that $44,000 or the total project cost, whichever is less. So if Conexus came back and says it's gonna cost $100,000 to relocate the, the poles, that would be somebody else's cost if this project is to move forward.
Okay.
Or this could be approved, conditions on, conditioned on Conexus approval or it could be tabled until we get the word back from Conexus.
One way or another, the cost limits kind of define the parameters for the whole thing.
That, that's correct, in, in, in my estimation, they set the cap on our financial participation in the project.
So with the way this is written, that six bullet where it talks about the Conexus relocation and the estimated $3,000 to $5,000 for city engineer services, that, that's part of that $44,000, right?
No, that's in addition to the $44,000.
So why are we agreeing to coordinate the relocation?
It's one of the requirements that Athens asks us to do. And they would assume the engineering cost for the remainder of the project.
So then our, our, our city's cost on this layout is, is from 47,000 to 49,000, it comes down to it though?
That, that's correct, that $44,000 is the construction cost.
Can, um, I know this has been explained to us before, but. Can, I know this has been explained to us before, but I need it again, I'm sorry. Why can't they, when they paved that road, why can't they just put a little bit of pavement on the north side and a little bit of pavement on the south side? Why does it have to redesign the whole road so you're cutting, you're hurting more people's property on the south side?
Actually, if we put a little bit on the south side, we'd be impacting more of our East Bethel residents. What this proposal or alignment does is to have all the paved portions of the road will actually be in Athens Township. The only portion in East Bethel will be that portion of the right-of-way necessary for the clearance of the ditch lines and the power poles.
I, forgive me if I'm mistaken, Suzanne, but I think that her point was, why can't we just tar the road where it is rather than realigning it to the border?
It wouldn't meet the width requirements of the street. That pavement, that dirt portion is only probably twelve, fourteen, twelve to sixteen feet wide after it leaves Sixth Street East going to the end of the, end of the road.
Well, and my understanding as well is that currently that road is on private property on residents in Athens Township.
No, it's, it's all, it's all in easement now, but there were several contentious, there was one lawsuit in there, that this map here shows the easement and the date they were acquired. But the paved portion of the road would all be within Athens Township. It would all be within the existing easements.
Right, but where the road currently is, is it not on private property?
No, and I'll ask Mr. Stranland to verify that.
Where the road currently is, in some areas, is north of the easement.
So it is beyond the easement.
Which means it's actually in the property of some of the residents in Athens Township. So that was my understanding why we couldn't just pave the road, as it were, even if we assumed that that road was gonna be widened up in the first place. We still couldn't do it because we're changing the road and it would be on somebody's personal property. I don't have a problem with realigning it to the edge of the county line. I think we're actually doing ourselves a favor because down the line, you know, they could actually say, you know, not, it's not gonna be on our side, it's gonna be on both sides of the road. And this is gonna get done sooner or later. Now granted, this is happening sooner than it normally would, but if it gets down to that, you know, another ten, fifteen years when they actually want to redo the road, we might have to actually have ten feet or twelve feet on our side of the property line of Anoka County, Izzy County. Again, I've seen some objections about trees and so forth, but all of that is within the right-of-way of this road. And I just, to me, I still think this is probably the best scenario that we could ask for. And, you know, Steve, your comment about, you know, the engineering fees being more than the forty-four thousand, I know that was more than kind of what we originally discussed and could justify over the period that we would have to do the maintenance for this road. But I think, I think we're also, you know, kind of also looking at the fact that the way this agreement comes down, we will not be responsible forever into the future for the maintenance of this road other than plowing, if we have to plow at any time at all. So I mean, if there has to be resurfacing or potholes or whatever else, we are just not gonna be involved in that because the road is gonna be entirely in Athens Township. So to me, the extra, you know, amount that we're talking about for the engineering fees to move the electrical is a small price to pay rather than a much larger one at a later date.
Well, my point is, it's adding to that cost, and so.
It is.
Something that we had discussed before. From, from the homeowner's perspective, the concern is the trees. And I know we've talked through this in the past. There's primarily two homeowners that are gonna be affected. One of the fairly thick standard trees and another one with a lot of liya trees. And so the one to the east at 4:30, 45th, are those, are those trees entirely within the right-of-way of the road?
Yes.
So then, again, I know we've talked about this in the past, but are there any way that we can avoid that line of trees?
Let me...
I think you just need to refresh.
If you look at this picture right here, this is a section of road in front of that house that we're discussing. This would be the northern edge of the pavement and over in here is the south edge of the pavement. This is where the county line is, so our easement goes another thirty-three feet in this direction. So this row of trees right here is almost right on that line. So those would be impacted. This pole is gonna have to go over closer to this second row of trees. It shouldn't really impact those. The issue here is this first row of trees is a denser, they're denser in vegetation, there's thicker trees than the others. This is the email that I sent you today in a discussion we had with Mr. Jensen. But those trees would have to be removed.
The ones next to the road.
Correct. These, these in this line right here.
So I have a question, and it probably might sound not too smart, but when I bought my house, the people who owned it before us had a row of trees like that, and they moved it ten feet closer to my house. Is it hard or expensive to move trees like that?
Yes.
Yeah, those trees are way too big to be relocated.
I mean, that's about the size of the tree, the same kind of trees that they moved, so I didn't know. I just know they moved them in.
How many trees is it, Jack? I don't remember the color, was it?
The count on this photograph right here?
Yeah, trees, was it?
I'm gonna say it looks like there's probably what, twelve to fifteen trees?
Did he say a dozen or so?
Or twenty. I believe he said twenty trees in his email.
Yeah, he did, twenty.
The, the motion that, if you wish to consider it tonight, would be to notify Athens that we will participate in it. There will have to be a memorandum of understanding developed that spells out all these details. That would have to be signed by both parties also.
I mean, the elephant in the room is, is moving the power lines, and I don't understand why we haven't, any of the parties haven't contacted Canexus to get their buy-in to this.
We have contacted them, but that was only done after the work meeting last week, so I haven't heard anything back from them.
So are we premature in approving this understanding to go to Athens, or?
Well, I, again, I don't think so because we're capping what we're gonna put into this. If we come back and Canexus says we're not gonna relocate the poles at our expense, East Bethel or Athens or whomever wishes to pay for them is gonna bear that cost, then our participation in this is limited to what we're approving. Or we could approve it on condition, or we could table it until we get the Canexus response back.
Well, what I'd like to do is move to amend item. The sixth bullet on page seventy-two of our packet talks about the conditions. And this one specifically to the Canexus relocation, engineering trees. I'd like to add a sentence that explicitly states that the costs, any cost for relocation of the Canexus utility will not be borne by the City of East Bethel.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Discussion to motion amend.
We have a motion on the floor, don't we?
This is a motion to amend.
Okay.
Any discussion on motion to amend?
Could you repeat that, please?
To add to that bullet, the statement that states that the City of East Bethel will not be responsible for any cost related to relocation of the utilities.
Other than the city's.
Other than the city engineers' services.
Which bullet does that?
The sixth bullet on page seventy-two of our packet.
Yeah. Okay.
The one that says the City of East Bethel would coordinate with Canexus utility relocation within the city easement.
Any other discussion to motion to amend? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion to amend passes. Back to original motion. Further discussion?
Is this just gonna be a strict blacktop road? There's no curb and gut or anything, right? Okay. I mean, it just says by Athens Township Engineering. I don't know what they got up their sleeve, so.
No, this would just be a rural section.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. On to staff reports.
I just want to mention to everyone that our cross-country ski trails are open in Cedar Creek. You can access these by going north onto Ranoff 229th and taking 235th to the end of the road. We have about sixteen miles of ski trails that are groomed.
How many miles?
Sixteen.
Sixteen miles.
Also, I'd like to mention to everyone, too, that the outdoor rink at the ice arena is open from four to 10 p.m. every day. There's a warming house there, and we also have free skating indoors at the arena on Wednesdays from one to three p.m. every week.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Counsel, Tim?
I've got a couple of things here. Last Thursday, we had our sunrise watershed meeting. We okayed the 2021 budgets. It ought to be coming before the City Council either. I would imagine the 24th of February or the 9th of March for rural K. And this morning, the fire department toured Cambia Hills. I tell you what, that is some building. I know Steve's got some comments on it, but if you get a chance, get over there when they have the public open, you gotta go. And it's quite the building.
The outside looks.
Yeah, the inside, the inside is something too, so.
Do they advertise when they have like a public viewing or anything?
Yeah, I think Steve's got some information.
Yeah, is that, is that a public?
There's a public one in there, too. It's elected officials and then something in public, too.
The evening portion is for the public.
That's all I've got.
It's, make sure to do this right. Wednesday, March 25th. And there's functions during the day, but between 4:30 and 6:30, it's listed as local community members and neighbors for tours. So I'm sure there'll be more information put out. We'll get something on the website, too, once we have that confirmed.
Thanks.
That's all I've got.
Good. Tom?
I don't have anything to add.
Suzanne?
You know, the only thing I have is last month I wanted to go to the Coon Lake Center coffee time, and I drove up there and nobody was there, so I assumed it got canceled. But if something is on the calendar and it gets canceled, it would be kind of nice if somebody would publicize that.
We usually don't get notifications from them if there's a cancellation. So if we get a cancellation, we'll certainly put it on there, though.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Randy? This last Saturday was our first event for Game On. We, we would have preferred a more robust response, but we did have a few residents come out and enjoy an afternoon of playing games. I think the, the big winner Saturday was, was Domino's. But if you wanted to come to the last one, we are certainly going to have another event in March in which we would, you know, encourage all of our residents again to come out for another afternoon of games and fun and talking to your fellow residents. I'm still firming up a date, but it will either be on March 7th or March 21st, and those are both Saturdays. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
And I do not have anything tonight, so. With that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second. Discussion. Hearing none to the motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Our meeting's adjourned.